Yeah, last time there was four of us running. One didn't do anything, kinda like Kathy. And then three of us kinda worked. I've dug a lot. Kathy Fuller did the second, and then this guy, um...
What do you mean they didn't work? What do you mean?
He didn't work. He didn't do anything. There was four of us. One of them just didn't do anything. He just kinda showed up, but he didn't...
I mean, did he answer questions?
Yeah.
Hello.
It was very short.
And welcome to the District Five Carroll County Board of Commissioners Republican Candidates Forum, being held here at the Carroll County Senior Citizens Center. My name is Charles Harrison, and I'm a member of the Carroll Media Center Board of Directors. This forum is being streamed live on the CMC's website at carrollmediacenter.org. It will be rebroadcast on cable channel, high-definition, 1068, beginning Friday, July 7th... I'm sorry, July 1st, at 7:00 PM, and repeated regularly until the primary election. It will be available on demand on YouTube and the CMC website. CMC provides this program as a service to our community. Our goal is to establish an equal platform for political advocacy and provide local residents with information about individuals seeking public office in the upcoming primary election. We encourage citizens to learn more about these candidates and to take an active part in the electoral process. At this time, I will turn the program over to our moderator for the evening, Bob Bluebaugh, who is CMC's Managing Editor for Digital Content, who will explain the rules of this event and open tonight's forum.
Thank you, Charles. As moderator for this evening, I'll introduce the candidates running for 2022 Republican primary election to represent District Five on the Board of Commissioners. All three candidates were invited to participate. Ms. Kate Martin and Commissioner Ed Rothstein are here. Ms. Kathy Allison is also running, but is not with us today. Each candidate will have two minutes to make an opening statement. That will be followed by a question-and-answer session. Each candidate will also have two minutes to answer each question. They'll answer identical questions. There will be no debate in this. This is an informational forum tonight. And at the conclusion of the Q&amp;A period, each candidate will have another two minutes for a closing statement. All responses will be timed, and the timekeeper will give the candidates a signal when 30 seconds remain. The timekeeper will ring a bell when two minutes have elapsed. The moderator, at that point, may immediately interrupt the candidates to discontinue the statement. Among the questions being asked tonight are those submitted in advance. And we received a lot of questions in advance, so we're very appreciative. We got more than 30 questions in the last couple of days. So we also received questions from tonight's studio audience. So again, we're very appreciative of that. The forum is being shown live on cable television and the Internet and recorded for rebroadcast, so we do ask that cellphones are turned off and everybody refrain from applause or making noise during the forum or doing anything audible or visible to express their opposition to any candidate or support for any candidate. So let us begin. Each candidate may now present a two-minute opening statement, and we'll begin with Ms. Kate M. Martin.
First of all, I want to thank the Media Center for hosting this event. My name is Kate Martin, and I'm really excited about the opportunity to represent District Five as your commissioner. I don't have a political background, nor have I ever run for office, but it doesn't take a background in politics to realize that local, state, and federal government have overstepped their boundaries. Voting for experience and name is what keeps getting us in trouble. It's time to hold people in positions of authority accountable for their actions. We must be smart and read between the lines. We must look at the finance reports, study town hall meetings, and pay attention to their every move. It's time to elect people that truly care about the health and well-being of our county. I don't want Carroll County to become the next Owens Mills, Columbia, or Frederick. If we're not careful about who we elect, we will turn into one of those places. My friends and family represent the diversity of Carroll County. We have blue-collar workers, teachers, police officers, farmers, veterans, medical professionals, to name a few. We are what makes this county go round. I'm counting on each one of you to go to my website and Facebook page so that you can learn more about me and recognize that our concerns and values are the same, and I will stand for them and never back down. Accountability and responsibility are ingrained in my DNA. This is my life as a mother of five school-aged children, a business owner, and a high-level competitive athlete. Tonight, I want you to walk away knowing that I am the right candidate for District Five. As your commissioner, I will prioritize the needs of our community, cut wasteful spending, won't increase taxes. I'll fund veteran services, school system, first responders, and protect our way of life. I'll support economic growth and development that conserves the beauty of Carroll County. As you listen to the candidates tonight, I want you to think about this. Is the drive for the title of commissioner greater than the drive for the betterment of our community? I will do everything within my power to keep government from stealing our liberties and take very seriously the job that is set before me. A vote for me is a vote for your family, your freedom, and our Carroll County.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Commissioner Rothstein.
Okay, thanks again to the Media Center and all Carroll Countyans for providing me this opportunity to share a few thoughts with you this evening. I'm committed to service to our community, which I believe comes from the 30-plus years that I've worn the uniform. Retiring in 2014 and taking the uniform off did not change that attitude. We moved to Carroll County in 2007 from Fort Carson, Colorado, due to a permanent change of station. And we landed in Carroll County because of the community, the culture, and the schools for our two kids, Emily and Sam. Our kids' success in the schools has been phenomenal, and I want to see that opportunity continue for our kids. Therefore, I'm running for reelection as the county commissioner in District Five to serve and lead in our economic development within the region, protect our community, and ensure our schools remain the top priority. Managing growth that pairs infrastructure and development while maintaining public support for keeping Carroll County the place to live, educate our kids, and establish a strong workplace environment is utmost on my priorities. I believe we can keep all of the above through strong communications, collaboration, and transparency that we've been doing between our county commissioners, our Board of Election, state delegation, and, most importantly, you, our community. And as always, life is always good, and I look forward to this evening's discussion. Thanks.
Thank you. Now, we'll move on to the Q&amp;A section of tonight's forum. With two candidates here tonight, we'll be able to get in probably about 15 questions. We'll keep it to about an hour in the Q&amp;A session. Again, you'll each have two minutes to respond, and we will alternate who goes first. So for the first question, we'll go with Commissioner Rothstein. And keep it pretty simple to start. What do you consider the biggest challenges currently facing the county, and what will you do to help Carroll County overcome those challenges?
I think the biggest challenge is keeping ourselves to live within our means, to focus on the appropriate infrastructure and development within the county, especially down here in the southern part. Making sure our roads are appropriate, making sure our schools don't go above capacity before we start deciding to grow any larger. I'm not saying we should not grow, and I do believe in economic growth where it makes sense. But the biggest challenge we have right now is keeping that infrastructure in place or available for that growth. Another part of the infrastructure issue outside of the southern part, but very, very important to Carroll County as a whole, is the broadband. We put about $18 million of funding for our broadband in Carroll County because what happened out of COVID-19 was a catalyst for an understanding that our kids were not being taught while they were out of the classroom. And we gotta get what's available or what's fair down here in the southern part of the county to what's fair in the northern part of the county. So I'd say a large issue right now is the infrastructure. And hold us accountable. Hold us accountable in making those decisions. The decisions come, and the strength comes from our government, comes from the people. And I'm committed to doing that, so, thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Martin?
I think our biggest challenge is really responsible growth and development. We have to make sure that our infrastructure is able to support it in terms of building. I think that we have oversaturated some of District Five, and I think that our infrastructure doesn't necessarily support it. I think that we've done a halfway decent job in widening roads and... halfway decent job in widening roads and keeping traffic running smoothly. But as far as, you know, new construction and building in terms of high-density housing, you know, that's something that we shouldn't look into. Again, as far as economic growth and development, we have to attract small businesses and mid-side businesses and figure out ways to get those businesses in here instead of just forcing residential in particular areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this time we'll start with Mrs. Martin. The current Board of Commissioners, like all elected officials, had to make some difficult decisions over the past few years. How would you assess the job local officials in general have done in dealing with the COVID-19 crisis?
That's a great question. I was actually at a friend who was... he's running for commissioner in another district, and there was a retired commissioner, current state delegate, that talked about, once commissioners get in office, they leave common sense at the door. And I believe that a lot of common sense was left at the door during COVID. It infuriated me. It put a light under me and a fire to make me sit here today, stand here today, and run for commissioner. I believe that we failed in supporting the true leaders, and I'm referring to our school board, the school board, when they stood up to the state board overreaching their authority and demanding that we mask the kids and keep the schools shut down. They stood up and fought to get our kids back in school. They were true leaders and used their common sense. They were following the science when the science didn't make sense. And I use "science" lightly because science wasn't followed. I just am extremely disappointed in the leadership within our commissioner board, and that's why I'm here today, and I'm ready to stand up and fight. And that will not happen when I'm in office. To me, it doesn't matter if I'm the only one standing there. I will not let government overreach and tell me that we need to lock our schools and shut our businesses down. We are what makes this community move, and what happened was wrong. And it takes a leader, and it takes courage and fight, and I have that. My family was impacted by those shutdowns. Our small businesses, my kids, my children, my older two, the mental health, the impact it was having on their mental health. Again, I can't stress that I will be the first one to stand up and fight to keep businesses open and keep the economy going.
Thank you. Commissioner Rothstein?
Okay, I think I think the opposite. I think we did a very good job. We were hit very quickly by one of the nursing homes that got hit very hard with COVID-19. And we put into place a state of emergency to take care of those community members. We made a decision early on to allow ourselves to stay in a state of emergency and adhere to our state policies, our governor and his directives. We did not decide to go above and beyond that. One thing we did do, which I'm very, very proud of, is we put $800,000 out of our own coffers right away to small business and to restaurants. We kept Main Streets open. This was not about Wall Street, it was about Main Street. I'm very proud of that. At the end of the day, from that $800,000, we went up to $8 million to small businesses and restaurants in the Main Streets and the communities in Carroll County. This was the fight that we maintained. Also, when it came to the testing and the vaccinations that were taking place, especially early on, we were pushed off to the side while these large entities were happening in Montgomery, Prince George's, Ballmer County, Ballmer City. So I was on calls with the Maryland Health Director and his team to convince them to put the resources here in Carroll County to get ourselves tested and get the vaccinations in place. We were holding weekly meetings with our EMS, our doctors, and our frontline nurses because the hospitals were overcapacity. We were figuring out how to get ambulances rerouted to taking care of our folks. So I am very proud of our workforce, you know, in the government and doing what they did. And I'll continue to say that and strive to continue to do better, so, thank you.
Thank you. For Commissioner Rothstein to begin. According to the most recent monthly report put out by the Sheriff's Office, I believe there were 10 fatal overdoses in Carroll County in May. What do you think is county government's role in combating the opioid epidemic, and what more can be done?
There's a lot that can be done. It is not going to be done just by laws and legislation by themselves. We gotta educate at the lowest level and make available resources to academia, to the school system. We continue to promote, and I'm very, again, proud of the Board of Commissioners prior to me coming into office, the Non-Carroll Program. In fact, this week, next week coming up, we're going to revisit the funding because we saw that the mental illness associated with the opioids and the drugs are tied together. So the Non-Carroll Program is addressing that mental illness. And the concerns that were mentioned before, the COVID-19, can, and it's anecdotal to me at this point because I just don't have it in front of me, has led to additional mental illness, which could lead to drugs and opioids. We've got to follow that and continue to build the programs in taking care of folks. The RSS program is very important. It's down here in the southern part of the county in taking care of rehab of folks. We need longer times or longer-term periods for residents in rehab. It's not enough. It's taking two, three, four, five, however many times for people going into rehab, coming back out of rehab, and then getting readmitted into it. So we need to have programs, and our county needs to continue to strive towards that. Yeah, and then at the last second is, we do have laws in place. Let's adhere to the laws. Let's continue to maintain the jail terms that are associated with those laws. And we don't have as bad of an issue there as we see in other jurisdictions, but there are laws that are there for a reason, and let's use them. But again, education, to me, is where it all begins, so, thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Martin?
I think that we need to work with the state's attorney and prosecute the distributors to the maximum penalty. We need to have more compassion with the end user. They are trying to use these opioids to self-medicate, and we need to work with the Health Department in bringing the resources and getting to the root of the issue of what's making them self-medicate. We need to focus on the prevention and intervention. And we also need to work with the Sheriff's Department to make sure that they have the funding for the resources they need to combat the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And staying with Mrs. Martin. What is your vision or strategy for economic development in the county?
My vision and strategy is to keep Carroll County Carroll County. Use common sense, make sure the infrastructure is in place before we continue to build. And when I say that, we need to make sure that our schools... I'm thinking specifically of the Warwick Project. When they... I had recently gone to a meeting, and they were talking about adding 200 homes. I'm sorry, not 200 homes. There was going to be an additional 200 students into the schools, which would put our numbers over the limit. We potentially have to redistrict. It would be overcrowding the streets, longer commute times for work. But we just really need to make sure that that infrastructure is in place. We need to preserve, keep the agricultural preservation initiatives going. And we just need to keep our law enforcement funded, make sure that our medical services are able to support the growth and development. And then again, you know, I would like to see more small-to-mid-sized businesses come in and maybe work with county to offer tax credits to the businesses coming in. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rothstein?
Well, you know, first, I'd like to say I'm very proud of our community's engagement in the work with the zoning and getting our zoning ordinances in place. We still have a ways to go with ag coming up soon, but I am very proud that we've gone in that direction to get clearer and more concise zoning. And the reason I'm bringing zoning up first is the first step, I believe, is we need to respect our property owners' rights to develop in accordance with what their property is allowing them to be zoned. Now, with that said, they don't live on an island. And a couple of them, let's take this development specifically residential, for the most part, down here in the southern part of the county, two very large properties, the Beatty Property and the Zabel Property. We had to get them right. We had to get them right because those are two very large parcels that we don't have anywhere else here in Carroll County. The way we got them right was having the ability to listen and learn to the community and then work and lead together with them in developing the Beatty and Zabel Property. I'll tell you, I'm not going to get any Christmas cards from any lawyers or developers in any near future because we went from a higher density to a mid-to-lower density in both those properties to be more appealing to our communities. And I'm very, very proud that we got there. And it was a lot of work with them, it was a lot of work in working with the community. Another piece is the Piney Run Reservoir. You know, we were looking at, and it is a reservoir. We were looking at dredging that reservoir, and the community came out in spades, and they said, "No, this is a place we don't want to dredge, and we want to maintain a lake." So we worked together in not doing that. So the key to development is listening to our community and doing what's right. We don't know all the right answers in ivory tower, and we've got to have that willingness, so, thanks.
Thank you. And starting with Commissioner Rothstein. Carroll County Public Schools makes up a huge chunk of the county budget. Do you consider funding for CCPS to be adequate at this point? And as a follow-up, do you feel the Board of Commissioners has a role in determining curriculum for the school system? A candidate at a previous forum seemed to indicate that funding could be held back if the curriculum wasn't to the board's liking.
I apologize, that's the second part of that question.
Do you feel like the Board of Commissioners has a role in determining curriculum for the school system?
No. No, so that's an easy one. That, absolutely no. Resources should be based on the requirements. And working very closely with the state, with the Board of Education, and CCPS in understanding what those requirements are, then determine the resources that we're going to allocate from our budget. Most recently, we've raised our budget numbers to support CCPS. Is it enough? No. I mean, we're not compensating our teachers, and again, those that are serving our children, well enough. And we have the opportunity to recruit, train, but we have challenges in retaining. Now, are they leaving, you know, over the floodgates? No, I don't believe they are. But we've got to have the ability to recruit, train, and retain the best of the best because we have that in the system in Carroll County with the schools. The Board of County Commissioners has an active role to play with the Board of Education and our community, absolutely. And that goes through dialogue, that goes through discussion. But we've got to understand our responsibilities that we have and our authorities. And we do not, as a Board of County Commissioners, have the authorities to design a curriculum. And, you know, I'm very proud of the Board of Education and proud to give them the resources they need to building those requirements.
Thank you. Mrs. Martin?
Can you please repeat the question?
Sure, sure. Carroll County Public Schools makes up a huge chunk of the county's budget. Do you feel that funding for CCPS has been adequate? And as a follow-up, do you feel the Board of Commissioners has a role in determining curriculum for that school system? And I ask that because a candidate at a previous forum seemed to indicate that funding could be held back if the curriculum wasn't to his liking.
So we are required by the state to pay a certain amount per student or to allocate a certain amount per student. So, you know, anything over that is a gift from the Board of Commissioners. I believe that the funding has been... some of the funding has been stripped during the COVID period, which made it challenging for the Board of Ed to fund certain things. I think it's important for the commissioners to stay in their lane in terms of giving feedback on curriculum issues or policy issues. I think that the Board of Ed has a right to vote and develop policies and not have to worry about the other additional members of the government within our local county having input. They were elected there in those seats. Right now, we have the best school board, and I trust their ability to allocate the funds accordingly. Eighty percent, I believe it's 80% of the budget that is allocated towards CCPS goes towards the income for the teachers and the salaries. There's really not a whole lot of room, so, you know, we just need to fund it to the maximum ability that we can and make sure that, you know, we're funding it based on the community needs. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll start here with you again. How should the public assess a candidate's campaign finance report?
How should the public?
Assess.
Assess. I think it's really important to see who is contributing to your finance report or to your campaign. I think you have to read between the lines, like I pointed out in my opening statement. If you're receiving large sums of money from special interest groups, I have to, I'm curious as to like what the motivation is to receiving those funds, and what are you going to do? Are there backroom... is there any backroom deal happening or handshake agreements? I would be concerned about that. If, again, if you're looking at it, and it's special interest groups contributing to these campaigns, and instead of the people, it raises a question, in my view. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rothstein?
How should... yeah, one more time.
Sure. How should the public assess a candidate's campaign finance report?
They should absolutely. Public is, again, the public. Government is designed from the public. It's a bottom-up approach, and that's what I'm so proud of. And that's why I'm a Republican. I want small government, so I want larger community input. The public should assess an individual's finance reports, and if there are issues or questions, then they should have the ability, and this is the most important part, they should have the ability to reach out to that individual and say, "Hey, I got a question about X." Social media has become such an out-of-control spin factor that questions people's ethics and leadership and all this other stuff that I just, you know, is very confusing. We all work very hard to be selfless servants. And I do believe that, whether I agree with somebody's views or not, whether in a position. But in part of that, I think it's very important that the public has that ability to reach out and touch those that are raising money or running for, you know, in office and ask a question and get the answer. And then it's up to them whether they believe or disbelieve that answer. But the public definitely has a role to play in this, so, thanks.
Thank you. Let's touch on a few issues that are important to District Five. And we'll start with Commissioner Rothstein first. How will you engage with the other four commissioners to convey the importance of allocating District Five's fair share of tax revenue to improvement projects for roads, schools, facilities, and services in the largest unincorporated growth area in the county that has the highest population density and generates significant tax revenue?
And it sure does, and I'm very proud of that. And I'm very proud of the work that our county commissioners and my colleagues have done to do just that. I'm not always going to get a 5-0 vote. You gotta be able to count to three. That's the rules as a Board of Commissioners. And working with the Board of Commissioners in counting to three, four, and five to allow for the appropriate densities, to allow for the appropriate road networks and infrastructure is critical. I did it with Ridnour, I did it with Georgetown, I did it with... and I don't want to say "I" because that's... I'm a media, I can't curse. So I want to say it's all of us. The jersey almost came out in me. It's all of us working together and collaborating together to building an infrastructure and convincing and working with my colleagues to ensure that they understand the impact... and convincing and working with my colleagues to ensure that they understand the impact that Eldersburg has and District Five has on the entire county. The reach that we have into Howard County, into Baltimore County, the closest we are to the agency. And as I say, eight and nine percent of the agent, of Ford Mead's workforce comes from Carroll County. Most of that comes from the southern part of the county. It is imperative, it is the must, that we strengthen our infrastructure and strengthen the economic growth and development down here. So it's working with our colleagues and sending that message. And that message honestly comes from you, the community, to strengthen it to me, to then share with them. And again, those two large parcels, the Beatty and Zabel, are great examples of that. So, thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Martin?
Can you, I'm so sorry, can you repeat it?
That was a long one.
It was a long one.
Okay. How will you engage with the other four Commissioners to convey the importance of allocating District Five's fair share of tax revenue to improvement projects for roads, schools, facilities, and services, given that this is the largest unincorporated growth area in the county and it has the highest population density and generates significant tax revenue?
Again, it's, you know, building relationships with the county Commissioners and having those conversations. You're working with the public, you're, you're gaining buy-in from your communities and you're taking it right back to the Commissioners and convincing them of the strategies that you want to do to improve the area. And convincing them that you're able to, you know, have the additional funding come our way to the southern side of the county.
Thank you. This is sort of a follow-up to that. Are you concerned about, and this is for you, Mrs. Martin. Are you concerned about the impact proposed developments will have on the Freedom District in regards to available facilities, infrastructure, and services? If not, why? And if so, what will you do to mitigate the impact?
I am concerned. In fact, I was really concerned when I attended the meeting about the Warwick project, Warfield project. Because my understanding several years ago, it was a seventy-five to eighty percent commercial. And when I went in April, it changed to seventy-five, eighty percent residential, which is going to have a serious impact on the current infrastructure. Increased crime, increased travel on the roads, increased student population in the schools, potential redistricting. In, did I say increased crime? But I, yes, I am concerned. And what am I going to do is that I'm going to make sure that the people in the community know what's happening. And if it's not a favorable answer, then I will do my best to make sure that we vote against whatever it is that they're trying to change. I'm not for a bait and switch, you know, leading the public to believe something and then behind closed doors making an agreement to something else. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rothstein?
We can't do it all. We can't do it all on the dais, nor should we. That's why, again, having town halls and newsletters and reaching out to the community, community having the ability to talk with me, being transparent is critical. Having the ability for the community to participate in planning and zoning commissions and a lot of other councils and commissions because that's where a lot of the expertise comes from. So doing it right through all of that is important and being transparent is extremely important. There are no backdoor deals, nor have I ever heard of one, at least here in this, in this county. Actually, in any county for that matter, because I've only been a Commissioner for three and a half years. So anyway, it is very important that we work together. And we have tools in place to ensure that the infrastructure is adequate. We work with the school system to ensure that the schools are adequate. And if they're not adequate, when are they going to reach a capacity? And if they are going to reach the capacity, buildings will not occur. We cannot grow if the infrastructure is not in place. One of the most, no. A reason I was adamant in curtailing the Zabel property, especially on the east side, was because I really truly believe that Ridge Road in Marysville Two does not have the ability to widen itself or get widened to allow for growth to happen in that area. So we've got to have the ability to look at the infrastructure with common sense, with the tools at hand, like the planning and zoning and our team, and then make those right decisions. You know, fire EMS, schools, infrastructure, it all comes into play before we put a shovel in the ground. Thanks.
Thank you. And we'll start with Commissioner Rothstein. How will you address the thousand-plus homes in District Five in sewer service area on older lots that were planned for sewer connections since the seventies and identified by the county as having septic issues? A recent survey revealed that the majority of homeowners were interested in connecting to public sewer and many reported having issues with their onsite systems, many of which also rely on well water.
Well, I was going to talk about the survey, but you already did. And I, I'm very proud of our planning department and our resource, land resource management team and DPW for that matter, for reaching out and understanding what the problem is. Because it's key to understand the problem before we're coming up with solutions. We are limited in water and it is here in the Freedom Area. And it's even more limited in much more properties outside of the Freedom Area. How are we going to deal with it is allow, work with those that want to hook up to sewer, to hook up to sewer. And it's not a, you know, you must or, you know, you, you will or will not. It is a choice and we've got to still allow that choice to happen. But it goes back to also the, the development. Is it the appropriate places to develop if we do not have the water capacity and the water and sewer to grow? You know, and this, we're hitting this especially when it comes to commercial growth. We are very limited and we're going to have to make trade-offs. If somebody wants to grow in one place, they're going to have to buy the, the water sewer from another location to allow them to grow. And we have limited that growth. Because, again, I'm very proud of the planning and zoning. I say it a lot because we're not all the experts on the dais. To work with the developers and the landowners and the, and those who want to build a property on whether they have that infrastructure to build. And that's specifically with water and sewer. So, thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Martin?
So although this is not my area of expertise, I would rely on those experts in that field to help better understand the issues that are, are set before us. And I just like, like, you know, President Trump and Ronald Reagan, they've relied on the experts to inform them so they can make educated decisions and move accordingly. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, how about a nice short question? I'll start with Mrs. Martin. Would you support South Carroll becoming a municipality?
I am not so sure what the benefit of South Carroll becoming a municipality would be. To me, I think that that would increase the taxes that the individual taxpayers paying. And now that we have the five commissioner structure, I believe that they have a voice at the county level. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rothstein?
Yeah, it's a good question. I haven't heard that in a while. Yeah, I think with our infrastructure the way it is in place right now, there's no need to be focusing on South Carroll or Eldersburg. Although some may call any specific individual the mayor of Eldersburg, there's no need to have Eldersburg as a municipality and build an infrastructure of resources around that, that municipality. A mayor, town council, town manager, X, Y, and Z. It's being, it's being, it's being held, no, it's, it's, it's growing appropriately. And I think we are putting a lot of our county resources to, to deal with it. So, no, I'm not in favor at this point in changing the infrastructure.
Thank you. And to start, Commissioner Rothstein. How would you rate infrastructure in Carroll County overall and in District Five in particular? And what improvements can be made over the next four years?
Well, infrastructure overall, so infrastructure overall, and if we take it to macro, we're really looking at two to three different Carroll counties or, you know, parts of the county. Up in the north, there is fifty-nine miles of unpaved roads. And we put a commitment in our last budget to pave those roads. Those in the north deserve the benefits that we have in the south. And those in the south should have the same benefits that those in the north have, and I'll get that in a second. The other issue, big, big issue, is broadband. It was brought up today, again, about the FRF, the federal dollars for COVID relief. And the issue had to do with whether we want to move money from broadband and put it into the municipalities to help their water projects. I absolutely support the municipalities and their water projects, but I do not want to take a dollar away from the broadband because those kids need it and, you know, we are woefully short in broadband. Coming down here, we have good, excuse me, broadband, we have good communications for the most part, except when you get around Oklahoma, sometimes there are a few dead spots. But, so, so that's not the issue. The, the issue is still with roads. Working with, well, county roads. So like I mentioned, Ridgenhour and Georgetown, two county roads. But also working with State Highway Administration and ensuring that twenty-six, thirty-two, and eight fifty-one are taken care of. It's important. Eight fifty-one specifically down in Main Street, Sykesville, I think we has put about four or five million dollars today to help the infrastructure underneath that road. So that's, that's a big chunk of change, taking care of the infrastructure. So, thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Martin?
So I just want to talk about the roads in, in District Five. But, you know, we've, we've widened our roads and I think that we've done a pretty good job over the last several years in, in increasing that infrastructure for the additional development. But I think if we continue to add the development, we're going to run into the same issue that we were facing years ago. I will also bring up the internet issue. We, that's, that's has to be a focus. You know, since COVID, a lot more people are working from home and I don't see, I see a lot of businesses keeping that structure, keeping the employees home. They are efficient, working from home. But if the kids end up having to be shut down again and, and they have to do the virtual learning, it's just, it was not acceptable. We did not have internet at my house. I could not work and have my two older kids be online for virtual schooling. That was not acceptable. They ended up watching my three younger kids while I went to the office. And I just think it is a real problem. And yes, I know there was a lot of money funneled in to try to get as many students access to it as possible. But there's low-income wage earners and there are rural parts of the county that still don't have internet and it's just not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll start with Mrs. Martin. And please correct me if my numbers are wrong, but I believe the county's operating budget shows a shortfall in each of the next five fiscal years, rising to twenty-six million in FY twenty-eight. Do you foresee a need to raise fees or tax rates in the next four years? And whether you do, are there areas of expenditures you believe could be cut?
So that is really what I want to do and that, that is the reason I want to get into, to this Commissioner office. I want to look at that budget. I believe that there's a lot of wasteful spending and we really need to get a handle of it. I do not want to increase taxes. With inflation, rising gases, the gas prices, I mean, we, I believe that if we can get control of our spending, that we can figure out how to not increase those taxes. Is the budget acceptable? No. We passed an unbalanced budget. That's, that's not acceptable. I think we really need to do a better job and I'm ready to get down and dirty and figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rothstein?
Actually, by law, we passed a balanced budget and that is the number one responsibility as a county commissioner to have is to pass a balanced budget by May thirty-first to enact in July first, our fiscal year. We are about twenty-five millions dollars shortfall out five years. If we were to take a look at the money we have right now, we could move money, not this year, in twenty-four and twenty-five, and you would see zeros. So you would see a balanced budget three years out. We don't want to play charades with this. We want to show the shortfall upfront so we know what to work with. I'm not concerned about out years, one, two, three, maybe even getting to four, five and six, yeah, I am very concerned. I'm not sure what wasteful spending there is. We just stood up a fire EMS by law. And we put millions of dollars into this, taking fourteen fire stations under one. We just increased a significant salary compensation for our sheriff's department. We're buying body cameras for our sheriff's department. The, the sheriff's department, just like the teachers, man, we're good at recruiting and training, the challenge is retaining. And retaining our sheriff's department was critical. We funded the public schools in addition this year. You know, this is all open public information. And we, I'd like to know where that pork is or where that overspending is because we did a really good job in balancing that budget. Do I think about taxes? Every day I think about taxes. Do I consider raising taxes? No. We're in a post-pandemic and inflationary situation right now. This is definitely not the time to address taxes.
Thank you. And for Commissioner Rothstein. Earlier this year, the Board of Commissioners voted to mandate masks for unvaccinated Carroll County government employees. What is your position on health policy as it relates to the medical privacy of county employees?
I believe we made the right decision in, at the time about masking. In retrospect, was it the right decision? I believe we could have taken more risk in not making that decision. You know, it's, it is a challenge because you're taking away some civil rights by doing that. We did not believe in vaccine cards or anything like that, you know, I can't remember what they called them. But we, we did put this in place. There was a challenge. There was a lot of unknowns. You know, it's, it's nice to use doctors and others as scapegoats and policymakers as scapegoats. There was a lot of unknowns and there was a lot of people dying. And when you got over a million people dying in our country, I'd rather be a little guarded in, in putting a mask in place. Was it the right thing to do at the time? The decision was right. Could we have taken risk? Yeah, in retrospect. But I'll tell you, it, it becomes very personal because I saw a lot of people in hospitals. I saw a lot of rerouting of our ambulances out of Carroll County and it was tough. It was, it was very tough. So, yeah, it, it's not easy. It's easy to be a Monday morning quarterback, you know, in a lot of this. But when you're sitting there and you're looking at the entire community, what is best for the entire community, I think we made a, a good decision at the time. So, thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Martin?
I think we really failed the people. That was a decision that was, it was discriminated against the unvaccinated. And at times where there, there was a four-to-one vote to mask the unvaccinated in the county building. That, to me, is appalling. I don't want anybody to know what my vaccination status is. I have a child that has, is not, would not be allowed to get a vaccine and is not allowed to wear a mask. And I don't want to have to tell anybody what his condition is. I, I just think that it was failed leadership, failure to ask questions. You know, what we heard for the last two years with hospitals being over capacity, there were medical workers that weren't working. They were sent home because they were unvaccinated. There were people laid off because too many people were working in a building. There were wings shut down in the hospitals. I just think we weren't told a lot of things. And that, that scares me because if we weren't told something now, I mean, what is it going to be in the future? Now that the, now that the, the people that have made these decisions have, have taken away our rights and liberties, what are they going to do next? And if we don't have people like me standing up to it, we're done. And I know this is just a county-level position, but it scares me. How far is it going to be? How far are they going to go? Thank you.
Thank you. Start with Mrs. Martin on this one. In two thousand thirteen, and this is a question- In 2013, and this is a question submitted in advance, two residents sued the county because they believed sectarian prayers at the start of commissioners' meetings to be unconstitutional, and ultimately, the county paid a settlement of $125,000 for not practicing separation of church and state. Do you agree to keep religion out of politics, given that you are representing all members of Carroll, those from many religious groups, as well as atheists and agnostics?
I'm disgusted with it. In fact, I don't believe that it should have been a vote to get prayer out of the county buildings. And when I get in, if I'm lucky enough to be elected, that will be one of the first things that I'd like to put back in. We should be allowed to pray. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rothstein?
We should always have the ability, and should always, I won't say take advantage, take every opportunity to pray. Do I believe church and state should be separate? Absolutely. We are not there on the dais to begin an official government meeting with a prayer. We do it now with a moment of silence, and I would think we made a good discussion amongst the five of us in doing that. And, you know, I, you know, I think that's, that's fair. I, I think before, they like rotated around and did whatever they did, and again, I'm not against whatsoever prayer. I am against openly praying in an open government meeting. I believe in Congress, they pray before they gavel in, and that's fine. Now, that may be a discussion to have, but once that gavel hits the, hits the wood, it's time to work. And, and we do a pledge, and I'm very proud of that, and we have a moment of silence, and, and I'm very proud of that as well. So, thanks.
Thank you. For Commissioner Rothstein first, if elected, how do you plan to balance work, family, and your constituency over the next four years?
Well, first off, I don't believe it's constituency. I believe it's community. I've always felt that way. It's neighbors, friends, family, and community. I don't even believe this is politics. I believe this is servant leadership. So, I mean, for three years, after, again, taking that uniform off, I was asked to do this, I said, okay, and I looked into doing this. And I enjoy it. I'm able to come home every day to an amazing wife and two kids and, and balance that part of it. You know, it is a 24/7 job. It is not a part-time job. I know it's part-time pay and all that kind of stuff, but it is a 24/7 responsibility, and I believe it should be. But with that 24/7 responsibility, maturity comes into play, and having the ability to balance is very important. And we look out for each other, and if we're not balanced, then we should see something, say something, and help somebody out to help them to get, get balanced. It is very important that we maintain a strong wellness and resiliency in ourselves while doing sometimes what some folks would call a difficult job in decision-making. Thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Martin?
I live in this community. I work in this community. I play in this community. I'm here 24/7. I don't think it will be hard to balance. When I'm at the gym, I'm having conversations with, with neighbors and other people from Sykesville. When I'm out running, literally running the streets with Eldersburg Roadrunners, we're talking about the different things happening within the community. I'm attending my kids' events, and I'm talking to the parents, the other parents of the kids that go to school with my children. I think balance will be, you know, is, is not, will not be a challenge. And I believe that, you know, this is all about creating relationships, and I'm living, working, and playing with the people of my community, and I just think that that's balance right there. You're working together to create a better community, and I want Carroll County to continue to be Carroll County. I want to continue to live, work, and play here, and I want my neighbors to. I want their kids to grow up with my kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Another question from the audience. In Howard County, and this is to start with Mrs. Martin, in Howard County, candidates on both sides of the aisle have taken to pledging not to accept campaign contributions from developers, because developers' interests are often perceived to misalign with the general public's interests. Would you or your campaign consider signing a comparable pledge in this county?
I'm sorry.
Basically, they've pledged not to accept campaign contribution from developers. Would you sign a similar pledge?
Sure. I, I would not. I, I don't, I would want my campaign funds to come from the people. I don't need to have a special interest group.
Thank you. Commissioner Rothstein?
No, I wouldn't sign a pledge. It doesn't make sense, nor do I believe a candidate or commissioner should be beholden to any individual or group. If they are, then we've got to check their ethics and their, their own maturity. Again, if there's question about where money comes from, ask the question. Ask the individual. And if they're willing to share with you, that's great. But no, I have torn up checks. When people have offered me donations, and I feel that they're not appropriate, I have absolutely torn them up. You know, and I say, I don't align with why you want to give me a check to support my candidacy. But, no, I, it's not just pledges or whatever it's called, the money. There's other things. I've heard the same thing. Would you pledge to this, or would you pledge to that? Like, no. Keep this pledging stuff, you know, back in college days or something, but, no, we're here to serve and not to just pledge our lives away, so.
Thank you. Starting with Commissioner Rothstein. If elected, how do you intend to work with other bodies, such as the Board of Education and Planning Department, who may have differing stances on divisive issues?
The Board of Education and the Planning Department?
That's
Okay, two, two very different entities. First is to understand the responsibilities of the, I'm not sure where this is going. If they're talking about Planning Department, like my Planning Department in the county, or the Planning and Zoning Commission? So I'm not, there's no more clarity on that, is there?
No, sorry, this, we're very fortunate to receive a lot of questions, but that's, that was one of them.
Yeah. That's kind of a, kind of a funky question, because the Planning Division is a director within the county commissioners. So if there's, within the county government, so if there's a question between them and the Board of Education, and CCPS, I guess I would be talking to CCPS and Board of Education, understanding their requirements. If it's a question with the board, or, excuse me, the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is a handful of community members, then I would, again, have those conversations. The fortunate thing that we have, which I'm very proud of, is the ability to talk, the ability to be transparent and communicate with the Board of Education, with CCPS, with the delegation, informally and formally. Audrey has my phone, but I got on speed dial or whatever it's called, contacts, all these players, and I can call any one of them informally, and then formally, we do get together, and I want to do that more. But, yeah, it's, it's kind of an interesting question, because it's not clear if you're talking about within the government or one of the commissions, but gave the best I could.
Thank you. Mrs. Martin?
So I'm taking the question, is it how I will work with these, these other groups if we have differing opinions? The way I'm viewing this is you're coming in here and you're building relationships with everybody, with all the different boards. And if you have different opinions, there's a way to be respectful and, and, and talk about the issues that are happening. Again, it's just about building the relationship with the people and having the respect to listen to them, find out what the root of the issue is, and kind of talk through it, and see if you can work together to come up with a solution. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll start again with you. The county is more than three-quarters of the way toward its goal of 100,000 agricultural acres preserved. What are your views on the AgPRES program, particularly given that some of the acreage runs up against designated growth areas? And will you support AgPRES in the Freedom Area?
I, I will definitely support it. I mean, in a time when, you know, we have increasing food shortages since the Biden administration has taken over, I think it's really important to focus on these, this agricultural preservation. We need, we just need to continue helping them and, and get to that 100,000. I think it's important, and I would definitely support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rothstein?
You know, this is a great goal. Some people would say it's a lofty goal. Since 1982, we had this goal in place to get to 100,000 acres, and we're actually, I think about 78,000 acres now. The challenge is going to be get to, get 22,000 acres out of about 47,000 acres that's left in Carroll County. So now we're in the, in the tough part. I mean, the first seven innings of this was easy. Now getting into the bottom of the seventh, we're, we're going to be tough, but I absolutely 100% support it. The challenge is, is funding it. It has gone ebb and flow in its funding, and it has been questioned again by, you know, some commissioners on whether it should be funded or not, because some would see that's a subsidy to preserving agricultural properties. I believe it's cultural. I believe that this is a great part of Carroll County culture, and we are the envy of every county in this state, and we are one of the highest preserve property counties, not sure if I say that in proper English, in the country. That's amazing. I mean, to think that we are one of the highest in the country, 78,000, and we're just going to get to that 100,000. So obviously, I'm very enthusiastic about it. I do support it through state programs like MAF. I do support it through Ag Preserve programs, that we're putting our money out of our coffers into it. It's not just county, but it's county matching with state, working together, and working with the community, identifying that last, you know, inning and a half, that last 22 and a half, or 22,000 acres. So, thanks.
Thank you. And we've pretty much reached the one-hour mark that we agreed upon for the question and answer, so let's ask one more question. We got to 19 of them tonight, so it worked out pretty well. Thanks again for everyone who brought up questions. To wrap up this Q and A, I'd just like each of you to discuss an issue that's important to you that we haven't touched upon tonight, and we can start with Commissioner Rothstein.
One issue we didn't talk about tonight was the importance of transparency and communications. I did allude to it, again, if that's the right word, but I, I did bring it up. The importance of having informal and formal conversations, the importance of having the ability, whether you agree or disagree with somebody, like in the delegation or the Board of Education, you know, and other entities, to make us whole. The ability to reach out beyond Carroll County to organizations like the Maryland Association of Counties, which I'm very proud to participate on, or the Economic Alliance of Greater Baltimore, or the Governor's Workforce Development Board. Those are all organizations that I believe are very important, vital, to making Carroll County not just the eighth, ninth-largest county in the state, but making us continue to be the preeminent county in the state. We got the best education, we got innovation opportunities here. It's all going to grow better through transparency and better communications and participation, I think, regional participation. So I think those are some things that we didn't cover the importance of. So, thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Martin?
I think we just really need to focus on talking to the people. I, I believe the people feel like they've been left out, and like Ed said, that we need to be transparent, we need to keep the people informed, and we need better ways to communicate with them. And I think that we can work with other organizations within the county government to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. I think that was a most informative Q and A. We'll now take closing statements. Again, each candidate will have two minutes to, to wrap things up for the evening, and we'll start with Mrs. Martin.
If there's one word to describe me, if I'm elected, I think it's change. I'm going to do the things that I say I'm going to do. If I'm going to tell you I'm going to vote a certain way, I'll vote a certain way. I'm going to continue to be a leader in our community. I will stand up for what is right, no matter who's on my side. I will look at your kids, I will look at your families, I will look at your parents. Everything I do on a day-to-day basis, every decision that's made within this, this commissioner board, and every decision that's made in this county directly impacts me, and it directly impacts you. I feel it. I have five school-age kids that range from 17 all the way down to four. I have older parents. I'm a small business owner. I'm a Christian. I'm, I'm fighting for us to keep Carroll County Carroll County, and I want you to believe that I'm going to work for you, not the other way around. I want you to believe it, and I want you to trust it. When I say I'm going to do something, I'm going to do it, and I will follow through. And I will not know all the answers. I don't have the three-and-a-half-years experience that the current commissioner does, and that's okay, because I'm ready. I'm ready to learn, and I'm ready to put up this fight, and I'm ready to balance the budget, and I'm ready to make Carroll County better than what it is today. I'm ready for it, and I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Rothstein, you've got the last word.
Okay. First and foremost, I'm glad I'm not using my glasses. This is cool. Thank you once again to the media center and our community for giving me this opportunity to share a few thoughts this evening. I'm committed to transparency and open communications. In other words, what you see is what you get. Communications and strong relationships with our men and women in red and blue, with our various boards and committees, state delegation, business community, and most of all, you, our Carroll Countyans, is critical to the success in keeping Carroll County the best place to be, where we do not overdevelop, we maintain an agricultural community that is the envy of all others in the state and most of the nation, and retain the county culture that we expect to maintain. No one knows Carroll County better than Carroll Countyans, and just because we can do something doesn't mean we should. Your, your opinion counts. Build where appropriate, and don't build where it's not. Compensate our frontline community, from men and women in red and blue to the teachers in the classroom, allowing us to recruit, train, and retain the best. That's what Carroll County deserves. First and foremost, there's nothing more important than our children. Ensuring a safe and secure environment for them to learn is paramount. Collaboration and communication and key are along, along with understanding the responsibilities of all those involved. Key to success is advocating for parents and the community to stay engaged in the decision-making process when it comes to curriculum for our students, while supporting our Board of Education and school system. As always, and once again, life is good, and remember to get out and vote, 7th through 14th for early voting, and on the 19th for the primaries. And once again, thank you.
Okay. Then thank you for joining us this evening, and to the candidates, you're always welcome to participate in these events. Thank you to the live audience and for the questions that you all submitted for these candidates. A special thanks to the South Carroll Senior Center for making this facility available to us. You know, coverage of this District Five County Commissioner Candidates Forum will be rebroadcast on cable channel, high-definition 1086, and will be available on demand for viewing at the Carroll Media Center website, carrollmediacenter.org. Before we go, I'd like to encourage everyone to learn more about the candidates and what they stand for, and all of the candidates that are running in the 2022 primary elections. You can learn more about these candidates by visiting the Community Media Center You can learn more about these candidates by visiting the Community Media Center's Voters' Guide website, where we have recorded all of the comments and you can really get an impression of what these candidates stand for and how that's going to impact on each and every one of us. You know, voting is, is, is not just a right, it is a responsibility and every vote count. So I would encourage each and every one of you to get out and vote and if it's by mail, that's fine. If it's early voting, that's terrific. If it is showing up at the polls on Election Day, July the 19th, all, all in favor of that. Okay? So again, thank you all for participating with us this evening and good night.